Finance Committee, December 4th, 2024.
We will call the Finance Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are James Mee, Christopher Moritz, Vicki Deschamps, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Prior to the public participation, we have a presentation from Ben Cooley from Crawford Murphy Tilly and Dave Shealy, who is the President of the Airport Commission.
Okay. If it's okay, Kevin, I'd like to speak for Dave?
Have at it. When you come up, tell us who you are and where you're from and all that.
Okay. Very good.
Kevin Detroit, 1505 Etchwood Drive. I was here a couple of weeks ago and spoke in front of Council regarding a project for the airport, a slurry seal project for the airport this year. And that was referred to committees. After I spoke to Council, the FAA came through and said, "We are suggesting that you put the slurry seal project on hold and pursue the terminal program, the airport terminal program." So, I was here last night, I should've said something, wasn't sure what I was supposed to do when you passed the legislation for the slurry seal. At this particular time, once again, the FAA has kind of told us to shelf that as we pursue the new terminal. So, I just wanted to get that out. And, you know, we, obviously, we want to do the slurry seal, but the, you know, the terminal project has to find its way through. And what I don't want to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, I want to kind of keep that slurry seal project until we see what direction the terminal program goes.
Okay.
Makes sense?
It does, yeah.
Good. I'm glad somebody understood, so. Okay. Sorry if I created any confusion or anything. That was not my intention at all.
Now, I mean, if you're content with us leaving that legislation that we passed last night on the books for the time being, if and when, if and when the time comes that we would need to repeal that or stick with it, just let us know.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Ben, did you have anything else on the terminal project for this evening, or?
I just...
Either of you, Ben or Kevin?
I would defer to Kevin and Dave first to see if they, I mean, there's, you know, the latest information is basically the same from last time.
Okay.
We're looking to proceed with some design efforts right now, so that is the, I don't want to...
The new handouts?
Yeah, I can share that. Okay, I do have a new handout. Let me, let me grab that, sorry.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Doing that, I did attend that meeting. It was very informative, and I understand where they're going to go with all this and how it's wrapped up, so.
I agree, I saw that.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, yes, you had, I have a handout here as well.
Thank you.
Summarizing the efforts that we're gonna, we'd like to pursue related to that, so the Commission met.
Wait, Jim?
To have these discussions. Hopefully, there was enough there. So, right now, the picture at the bottom should sort of match what you guys saw previously, but the intent would be to get the design underway. Once again, we're still under a kind of a quick turnaround for the FAA's funding cycle. We have until probably May 1. There is a potential to extend that if we need to, but right now, May 1 is our deadline to have a terminal building designed and bid for construction. And so, we're, we're looking to, you know, basically proceed with design as fast as possible, kind of December, January, February, to make sure we can bid something in time to make sure that money that they've promised us gets locked down under grant by May, or submitted by May, May 1. So, what I've done is I tried to summarize what the project is there at the top, as well as discussing kind of where the funding would come from, split up by calendar year. So, we talk fiscal years when it comes to the FAA money, but I tried to split it out by calendar year, knowing that there's budget cycles locally and things that would need to kind of, by designing the project, there is a bigger, eventually, you need to construct what you've designed. So, I wanted to make sure you guys could see currently what is slated for the next two years to actually get the project built. So, as you see there, the, the total project is estimated, and this is everything related to the terminal, the building itself, the parking lot, the apron out front, all that work is estimated to be 2.9 million, of which the FAA's funding is 2.46. And so, we would look over the next two years to seek $340,000 of local money in '25 and '26. But most importantly, if that, you know, basically, I'll stop there and go, that's kind of the, the project, big picture. What we're talking now is just getting started with the design efforts associated with the terminal building itself.
All right.
Any questions on any of that?
What do you think of us?
So, right now, the, sort of the item that's on the table is the execution of the terminal design phase agreement with CMT for $150,000, the local share being $28,000 locally.
And when do you want that done? Are you looking to have that done as soon as possible?
As soon as possible would be desirable. We, we know that it's sort of tight, we're trying to work quickly. One of the caveats of securing the 1.9 million dollars of FAA funding that was competitive, very competitive across the nation that you guys were selected to receive, was this, you know, lock something in within six months. That was one of the requirements, and so, we said, "Yep, we'll figure it out, we'll get it done." We knew that we'd have sort of the legislative side and all that to go through, but we think the design can follow if sometime in December this gets figured out and we can finish design, get our architect running with the actual pieces of it, and be ready by, by May 1.
All right. So, I think, Jim, to answer your question, what we would need would be a motion to request legislation allowing the administration to enter into a contract with CMT for the design of the terminal project not to exceed $150,000 with local share being not to exceed $28,000.
Second.
Are you requesting that as an emergency, sir?
As an emergency, please.
Okay. So, just to reiterate, your motion is to allow the administration to enter into a contract with CMT for the terminal project design not to exceed $150,000, local share $28,000 as an emergency?
Yes.
I'll second that. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Mee and a second by Christopher Moritz. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Budget-wise, is, how is our budget looking for?
So, when you guys were last here, I remember I had scribbled in my notes to the side, 1.9 million FAA, 100,000 city share. So, looking at this, that's not going to be the case, it's going to be the 300,000?
Correct. So, what we have, and I, and I don't want to sort of go over the detail, you know, skim the details, but it does get complicated. We're working with kind of three different buckets of money when splitting the entirety of the project, that is, the building, the pavements, the utilities, everything associated with the terminal gets broken into these different pockets of money. Each one has a different requirement of what can go in each bucket, and there's different federal share. So, anything that's pavement out front, anything that's the parking lot, all of that has a 95% every sort of share. The terminal building itself is where anything public, anything that is open to the public gets that same sort of 95% coverage, but there are things like Kevin's office or any airport manager office that would not be considered public space that the FAA will not sort of fund, and so, they take that dollar amount, or the floor, the floor plan square footage, and break off the chunks that they don't believe is eligible for public use, and so, then that 95% funding gets cut down based on those, those sizes. So, the building's not designed, so they've given us an estimated 80, 83.5% or whatever of what they think the building's going to be. Once we design it, they will reevaluate that again, and the number will, will tweak slightly depending on what the final building design is, but that's the, the constant struggle of sort of weighing what we need versus what the FAA will fund and making sure that we're, that we're covered. The number that I show there is kind of the, not worst case, but a very, a very common percentage coverage. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be lower than that, you wouldn't have a, a higher local share than that. We would try to take the building footprint and really utilize and go, to maximize the public side so that we maximize the federal share in that piece. So, the dollar amount does change based on that, and unfortunately, the building piece is the largest sort of component, and so, when that changes by 1 or 2%, it, it affects the local share quite significantly each time.
So, at this time, I don't believe we have $300,000 in the budget for 2025 to work with. I know you said that that amount may change. Could we still get the grant for the engineering portion? Do the, gosh, the action item that you have in here, resolution to fund the local portion of the overall project cost, which includes the execution of terminal design phase agreement, that portion? Could we do that without necessarily committing to the full build of the building and that still be covered by a grant?
Yes. Obviously, the FAA does not look kindly at designing a building that would never be constructed, so, or would not have the intent to construct it. One of the ATP, the Airport Terminal Program, grant requirements, that 1.9 million dollars, it's a, it's a one grant, where they're gonna, they're gonna take everything that we have designed and bid and put it into that one grant. And so, if, if all we have is a design, they will use that money to reimburse 150,000 of design. The remainder of it then goes back into the system and becomes part of something else. So, we can work through, we've already talked internally with the Airport Commission about end result, end costs, that sort of thing. Once again, we started with what we think would be a, we don't want to come back and ask for more, but we also want to be as frugal as possible. So, that, so we're starting at kind of a, a very baseline dollar amount, and then I think we could work ourselves, we could reduce that cost locally, and we won't know until it's designed and bid where exactly those numbers fall out, but we would know prior to you having to, you know, a grant needing to be applied for or signed on the, on the bottom line of what...
Okay. Because I, I mean, I feel comfortable with that portion going, you know, we can, since if we're not doing the slurry project, we had, I had already budgeted for the 20,000, I can find somewhere to put the 8,000, $8,523 and get that in the local share for this year, and I had come up with about 100,000 if we were moving the slurry portion. The 300 is going to be difficult to get to, but if we get it designed and then we figure out what's going on, exactly what that will be, we can appropriate later, or I can try to transfer some money at the budget at that, in 2025, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
As long as we're not committing to the construction of this building tonight.
From your standpoint, the legislation we passed last night with the 19750, do we, do we need to rescind that to enter into this one? From a, from your budgetary standpoint?
You know, I'm not sure.
I mean, I think I would feel more comfortable. I know you said you want to leave it on the table, but if it comes back up, that's what we want to do, we can pass that again within a matter of a week. How would that affect your plans, Ben, if we were to negate what we passed last night to do this?
We have, we will continue to focus all of our efforts on the terminal building moving forward. So, as long as the intent would be everyone's on board and there doesn't seem to be an immediate roadblock to the terminal building, that's the direction we're headed. We aren't pursuing the runway.
So, if you did have a need for the slurry thing to come back up, we could address it at that time?
We could go through that again if for some reason it just, the money wasn't there, something came up, we're, we're not going down the road, we can't just, we couldn't pivot, get the legislation back and be ready. We will, by May 1, something needs to be under grant, or we will be losing additional funds, not only the 1.9, but additional funds out there, because we have been kind of banking our money over the last few fiscal years to be able to apply a good amount of money to this terminal project with the hopes that it would be awarded to us. So, yes, we could come back.
Question for the Law Director. I was going to ask Mr. Mee if he wanted to amend his motion to include repealing Resolution 237-2024, but that came out of the Service Committee. Are we out of bounds?
Yeah, that's going to come from the Service Committee.
Okay. Very well. Did you have further discussion, Mrs. Deschamps?
Well, I'm back to, what motion are we?
Mr. Mee has made a motion to allow CMT to enter, to the administration to enter into a contract with CMT for the design portion of the terminal project not to exceed $150,000 with our local share being not to exceed $28,000.
Okay, so, we're not committing to this?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. And please know that I am totally for the airport. I just...
Agreed, which is why we also want, hopefully, I can talk now. We want to make sure that when we're doing the design, we take the time to get all parties involved and be able to end up with something that the whole community is going to want to support and enjoy and feel good about, and so, that's, but that has to happen, and so, we got to get through that process and be able to go, this is where we're at, and that's where that final number will be, and you'll be able to review and address it then.
Could Kevin operate out of a small janitor closet? No, I'm kidding.
That has come up, you know, four-by-four square that Kevin stands.
I was going to say, you know, we could actually probably for about $10, order him a sign for his office door that says, "Open to Public."
You know, I've always said, if a phone booth is big enough for Superman...
My golly, it's good enough for Kevin.
Kevin, my question is, is that section staying the same?
On the one that we did last night?
Right.
So, the story is that they no longer want to push forward with that?
No, I'm editing this.
Oh, so for...
So, is that section staying the same?
Yes. So, what he's asking is, on the design portion, the federal and state is 90%, and the city's 5%?
No, we'd be following that same modified share, because we're talking about the building and they take the number, and I thought that would be a... It's on... Because it's really... There it is. 85.3% eligible.
85?
85.3.
From federal?
For, would be federal, well, well, take the full building price or the full design price in this case, 85.3 of that would be eligible. Of that, 85.3%, they cover 95% of that piece.
Okay.
And so, which is why if we can, if we can raise the eligible portion, you know, 5%, that goes a long ways to, you know, cover additional, you know, reduce that dollar.
Is there any further discussion from the committee?
So, you plan on taking the money that we were going to do the slurry with?
Trying to find about 10,000 somewhere else, $8,523, and move it into that line for the city share of the airport.
All right, I'm good.
So, the motion again is, if you wouldn't mind repeating?
Not at all. Mr. Mee's motion was to allow the administration to enter into a contract with CMT to provide the design portion of the terminal project at a cost not to exceed $150,000 with a local share not to exceed $28,000.
I believe it's 28,523.
Thanks.
But the money won't be there for the legislation that we passed last night?
Well, so, Mr. Gobrik says the Service Committee would have to actually request that that be revoked.
Right. Okay.
So, we'll have to ask the Service Committee to revoke last night's legislation. All right. I do have a motion on the floor. There's no further discussion. I'll do a roll call, vote Mr. Mee.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschamps?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that motion carries.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll open it up to public participation. Any member of the public that wishes to address the committee, please come to the podium and give your name and address.
Fred Fisher, 430 Stevens Court. It saddens me in a bit to be up here. I want to be clear, I am on the Airport Commission, but I am speaking as a non-Airport Commission represent, representative, as a member of the community, a 10-year member working to the airport, promoting it through fly-ins and various other things. When the Commission met some, two-plus years ago, we put together, Council passed legislation to do a preliminary study on the possibility of getting this funding for the airport terminal replacement building. And at that time, the concern was just to get something in the slot, was the words that were used. FAA is its own little world, and so, to kind of stir up the pot was not a good thing to do, so there were three or four alternatives, of which the one that has currently been presented to you is the one that was kind of recommended, which is putting it in behind the existing admin building. The problem with that is, is that it gives us, for all practical purposes, no room for expansion down the road, very little room for additional hangars, and the city already owns some 60 available acres on the other side. We had two years to kind of investigate other options for funding, knowing that we were at the top of the list because we were one of two airports in Ohio that had admin buildings that were inside the 400-foot setback, which is a center line on the runway. The setback is a safety zone, and our current city hangar and admin building are inside that 400-foot zone. So, we knew we had a pretty good chance, the first two years, obviously, we didn't get the grant, this year we did. The problem I have is, is that going forward, the airport is probably the city's front door to industrial and economic growth. If you're going to put multiple millions of dollars in a manufacturing facility or something in here, you're going to probably fly in in some kind of a corporate jet, and we already have that kind of traffic now. The people that own the GE building fly in regularly with a corporate jet, so this is kind of our gateway to our future. Back a couple, three or four months ago, Jobs Ohio came up here on a Thursday, spent a whole day with their folks out of North Carolina, that basically, it did a mock presentation. We don't have any sites in, within the city area, other than a couple, some land out at the Crossroads Industrial Park that are job-ready, if you might say, or industrial development. Any sites that we do have are going to take extensive development, but they're not out of the picture. And it was mentioned in the Commission meeting that, you know, that project, basically, the conclusion of it was, is that these are all dead sites, and that's not true at all. It's just all, first of all, we all know we got a sewage treatment capacity problem and so, till that gets resolved, nothing happens. So, that being said, I have talked for a couple of years about looking at the other side of the runway for a number of reasons, mostly because we could have room for additional hangars, maybe even a restaurant, some nice things that could involve it. Nothing took place on the part of the Air Corps Commission during that time to even look at the options. As late as about 3 o'clock today, I talked to Sarah at the Partnership, and she was talking with ODOT, and there are two programs, one for access roads to airports that are state-funded, and there's another new program that, surprise, surprise, they will put, there's money for tourism. Now, how would that affect our, well, we happen to be the first municipal airport that was started and operated, that had some trials and tribulations getting going with City Council at that time, back in 1929, but the reality is, we were the first airport managed by a woman, and that was Loretta Schimler, which we've started a museum in her honor. Over and above that, she went on to California and was recognized by the Air Force as the founder of flight nurses and medevac. That's pretty historical, and historical society has all kinds of memorabilia up there on display now and some that there isn't room for. So, my point is, is that we've got a number of venues, and for whatever reason, and I don't understand this, and I have all the respect in the world for the other members in the Commission, but there was absolutely no conversation that was positive about this, and they weren't willing to give you the option of even looking at a second choice. And I don't think as appointed members, when you are elected as Council members to represent our city, that you shouldn't have the options. So, I do have some handouts that shows some of the spacing and what could be done. I would hope, I can't speak on behalf of CMT, but I know there's been conversations and for a very small amount of money, they could currently do boring samples both at the existing proposed location, but also across the way. And we've got six months, and I can promise you that Sarah has said, and we pay a significant amount of money toward the Partnership as far as economic development, that they would help us pursue and see what the options are. What we need to do right now is design a building. Where it gets parked is kind of secondary in the short term. So, we need to design a building, but while we're doing that, we could look at other funding options. You know, my history with that airport goes way back. If you were at the Pancake Fly-In, we had a C-47 twin-engine plane out there. I stood under the wing of that plane when our hard surface runway was taking pictures for the chamber, back in 1966, I believe it was, taking pictures when the governor came to dedicate him along with the Timkens. Timken donated money toward the construction of that airport. We have neither pursued industry that might consider contributing toward part of this project, we haven't considered talking to the county commissioners. I can tell you, I've personally talked to all three of the current ones, and they've all said they would be willing to put something in their budget toward the operation of the airport, and nothing's happened on that for over a year and a half. It is Port Biscaris Crawford County Airport, it is a designated county airport. So, I really think that as a Commission, we've dropped the ball on this thing, not only for our community, but if anything, for our, our future and our economic development. Not to at least explore the option, to me, is just sad. So, with that, I would hope that, that Council or the committee here would consider looking at a second option. I can't change what the Commission voted on. There were four Commission members there, was it four-to-three vote, or four-to-one vote, and it was obviously a no. All I wanted was the option to explore secondary options, so. This document is really crude. Thank you. It's a copy of a copy, but if you look in the lower, toward the bottom, there's a little kind of a cruddy-looking triangle. That's where our current airport, and then looking to new windows though, across the way where the big letters city property are, that is all the land that the city already owns. And I can tell you, if we didn't own that land, I wouldn't be up here talking right now. Because to go out and acquire land, expand the airport, is probably not feasible for a lot of reasons. The fact that we already own it, we need to at least explore it. Here is some letters that I sent to ODOT, email responses from the footprint, report of all the different funding programs that state. Clearly, some of those funding programs are, are tied to jobs, but there are other programs that are out there. So, just to know there are options available.
Oh, okay.
So, again, I just, I, I really hope that, that we can open this window just a little bit. It's not going to cost the city any significant amount of money, Ben could firm it, but I think if the, what you just passed might go up a couple thousand dollars to expand the window a little bit, to do some of the additional boring samples. I think that would be money well spent. I might add too, and Kaylee, I, you know the answer to this better than I do, but when we did the parallel taxiway, that, there was 5% local funding put in that, and FAA ended up 100% financing that. we did the parallel taxiway, that, there was five percent local funding put in that, and FAA ended up a hundred percent financing that. And to my knowledge, there was about a hundred ninety thousand dollars that was refunded back to the city this year that goes into the general fund, but it wasn't part of your budget, I'm pretty sure, because we didn't even know about it in '23. So in '24, we've received about a hundred ninety thousand dollars that obviously goes back into the general fund, but that's kind of airport money. So I don't know that we really have a problem with funding some of this stuff. And that three hundred thousand that you're talking about, there's kind of two-thirds of it right there, unless you want to use it to spend someplace else. And when you can get eighty-five and ninety percent money, I think that's a pretty good turn on investment. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public participation? All right. Seeing none, you have before you the minutes for the November 21st, 2024 Regular Finance Committee meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 21st, 2024 minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Moritz, a second by Mr. Me. Any discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
I'm also a yes that motion carries. We have the failed tax levy options on there, but as we discussed, we want to wait and see the budget, and then we'll start talking about that. So that probably won't be on for the next couple of meetings, but we'll put it back on when the time is right. Mr. Me, anything on the open project list you wish to discuss this evening?
Not at this time.
Mr. Moritz?
I do not, for probably another two weeks.
Mrs. DeShawn?
No.
Okay. Any further public participation?
All right. Thank you. James Barker, 322 Wiley Street, Bussaras.
Mr. Barker, you're here on the taxi?
Yes.
And that's under the Health and Safety Committee, and this is the Finance Committee. So.
Three more committees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know that we need to, I mean, you can if you want to.
All right. Seeing no further public participation, we will adjourn at 6:32 PM.
Service Committee, December 4th, 2024.
Service Committee meeting at 6:33. Called to order, members present, Ciaran Sherrick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I myself, Christopher Morris, Chair. Like to open up for any public participation at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to have approval for minutes, excuse me, for November 21st, 2024.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 21st, 2024 Regular Service Committee meeting.
Sir.
First by Aaron Sherrick, second by Zion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Open projects, I do have one. Good news, Chapter 900 section will be, I got to copy that tonight. It'll be on Doc's Demand by tomorrow, and everybody will have a chance to see that for the next two weeks, and look at it and have comments on it. So hopefully, that'll be done, done, and ready to share with everyone. Also, at this time, also as a project, I need a motion to repeal legislation we passed last night for the slurry.
I will make a motion requesting legislation as an emergency to repeal ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 237-2024.
Thank you for that.
I'll second.
First by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Hickman. Roll call vote on this one? You have to call us to vote. Call us vote, call to vote? Yeah. Tell who you want to vote. Oh. Call to vote?
Myers.
Myers, yes, sorry. Hickman?
Yes.
Aaron Sherrick? I myself, yes. First time I had to do that, so.
Good job.
Pick up on it. Any more public participation? Seeing none, moving on. 6:35.
Economic Development Committee, December 4th, 2024.
I will call the Economic Development Committee to order at 6:37 PM. Members present are Vicki DeShawn, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Carolyn Shireman is absent. We have any public participation for Economic Development? Seeing none, move on to the approval of minutes from the November 21st, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting?
I move to approve the Thursday, November 21st, 2024 Economic Development Committee meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Have a motion from Miss DeShawn, a second from Mr. Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Have a letter from the Bussaras Public Library dated November 8th, 2024. Believe we're looking for a reappointment of a Mrs. Nancy McMurray. So I will ask for a motion for the reappointment of Nancy McMurray to the Bussaras Public Library Board of Trustees, her term beginning January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2028.
2025?
2025, sorry.
And then, did you say 2028?
Yeah, for, the end of her term.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, did you want that with emergency?
Yes, as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Have a first from Miss DeShawn, a second from Mr. Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes as emergency. We have anything on open projects you wish to discuss?
No.
All right. Do we have any more public participation for Economic Development? Seeing none, I will adjourn at 6:39 PM.
Health and Safety Committee, December 4th, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order. Members present, oh, I should say, called to order at 6:39 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Ciaran Sherrick, James Me, and myself, Vicki DeShawn, Chair. Before we have public participation, I'd like to, for clarification purposes, let everyone know that, because I think there's some confusion on what you can and can't talk about. During the Health and Safety Committee meeting, you are allowed to talk about any health and safety subject that is listed on the agenda. If the subject is not listed on the agenda, but is listed on our open projects list, you may also talk about that subject. You are also allowed to talk about any health and safety subject that is not listed on tonight's agenda, or not listed on the open projects list. However, the Committee cannot discuss that subject until it has been referred to the Committee by Council. So with that being said, anyone wishing to speak to the Health and Safety Committee tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and residential address, and begin your talk.
Aye, Chair. State where they can find those on Documents on Demand, where they can find everything.
You mean, oh, as far as the agenda?
Agenda.
And the open projects list? Yes, those are on our Documents on Demand site.
City website.
City website, yes. So do we have any public participation?
James Barker, 322 Wiley Street, Bussaras. On these taxis, the insurance is way too high for us to run in this city. A million-dollar policy is too much. We need to get that lowered. The licenses and the permits are fine, this, this insurance is crazy. Paying four hundred and sixty-three dollars a month for all these months, and for a million-dollar policy that we don't even need, nowhere in Ohio it has that much policy, policy on their taxis. So I don't know where anybody's coming up with a million-dollar policy. I'd like to get that lowered, so we can afford it and stay in business. Got a letter from Lieutenant Bursey where he wants an appointment to inspect vehicles now. I have no trouble with that, but the only thing it does is the price of the license, not the, also the permits, they're not on there, and there's no proof of insurance no more. I know some of these taxi cabs around here are getting away with it. They don't have a million-dollar policy, and the only person you can get a million-dollar policy is through Pritchard Insurance. And I'm the only one that has it through that company, which he has to go out of state and get. Costs us sixteen hundred dollars to start this, and five hundred dollars a month. That's ridiculous. So we need to get that dropped where we can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're paying, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You're paying four hundred and sixty-three dollars a month, that's five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars a year?
Yes.
For a million-dollar policy?
For a million-dollar policy.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Adrian Kemery, 725 South Spring Street. I don't know about taxis in particular, but I will say that a million-dollar policy on a commercial auto is not unheard of. It's pretty typical, and with the company I work for, it is usually the lowest amount I see. There may be one step under that. However, there are also companies that, in addition to having a million-dollar policy, will also have like a ten-million-dollar umbrella policy, which comes into effect if the million dollars isn't enough. So I understand that a million sounds like a lot of money, but I believe it was Mr. Frank Howser mentioned that the state minimum is twenty-five thousand. That is for personal insurance. That is not enough. If you buy a brand-new vehicle, any brand-new vehicle nowadays is going to cost more than twenty-five thousand. So if you are at fault in an accident, and you hit another party, and you damaged their fifty-thousand-dollar vehicle, that only means you have only twenty-five thousand to get to, and that person has to use their own insurance for the difference. However, their insurance company will go after those people as individuals, and they do not have to accept people's minimum limits. They can go after people's homes, they can go after the business itself, any assets that they have, put judgments against them. So, yes, twenty-five thousand is the state minimum, but I can assure you, that is not enough. With being a taxi cab, I don't know what the seating is in the vehicles, but you could have up to five people in that car. If you are in an at-fall accident, you hit another vehicle, say they have three or four people in it, obviously, this is a horrible thing, but this is the world that we live in, and this is insurance. You have to think of worst-case scenarios. You could kill potentially nine people in total two vehicles, and a million dollars is not enough money. It's a drop in the bucket of what nine people's lives would be worth. So I'm not saying you have to keep it at a million, but I'm saying you definitely need to keep it high enough to make someone whole if they are injured, if their vehicle's totaled. Someone could still be alive. They could be nineteen years old, let's say this, they could be twenty-five years old and making two hundred thousand dollars a year, and they have three little kids, and then they are injured to the point where they can't ever work again. And now they can't make that money for their children in the future, and their whole family is out that money. So I just think it's a good idea to keep that number higher, almost as a protection for the people that are driving the taxi cabs and the citizens of Bussaras. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public participation? Did you want to speak now, Kevin?
Let's wait till you get to the agenda.
Okay. We have this on our agenda, so when we get down to that, Mr. Barker, then Mr. Myers is going to speak about the taxi cab. Next on our agenda is wavelength and cameras. I don't know.
Table that Monday night.
Okay, so nothing to discuss there. Next, Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Chapter 711, dealing with peddlers and solicitors law. This was not to be on tonight's agenda. We just, I just was given the draft legislation, and I don't even know if it was legislation, draft edits for that particular chapter just yesterday. So I will see that Miranda gets those to the Committee members, and then we'll have this on our agenda for the next Committee meeting. Next is our taxi cab insurance, or taxi cab licensing, Chapter 381, but we're talking more about the insurance requirements. Mr. Myers, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, when I chaired the Health and Safety Committee the previous council term, we extensively worked on this chapter and looked in depth at it. Couple of statements, sir, that you made that I do want to clarify. You said that Pritchard's Insurance is the only place you can get this. Any insurance agent licensed to do business in the state of Ohio can sell a million-dollar commercial auto policy. Okay, I'm just letting you know. My day job, I'm an insurance agent. Am I free to state what your career is, or is that a, Ms. Kemery that spoke, she is an insurance adjuster. So she sees the side of this when a claim happens. I see the side of this in the sales portion of what industry standard is. And I will say that the industry standard for any commercial policy, whether it's taxi, trucks driving up and down the road, hauling pigs, whatever, the industry standard starts at a million dollars. And like she mentioned, you have, most people have umbrellas that go far and above that. When a claim does happen, and she's going to be much more well-versed than I am to speak on this, but when a claim happens, like she said, that million dollars is gone before you know it, and it has to be shared among all parties that are involved. We did look extensively at other cities around the state and the country, and felt at that time, and we did do our due diligence, and we felt at that time that the million dollars was completely fine. In fact, we considered higher numbers than that at the time, and we felt like a million, kept it fair for those of you doing business, but still protected the public. To your points that there's people that are not following the rule, that's where I have a problem. And I don't know what we can do, or if it's just a matter of, you know, that we request that the police department, and we'll talk to the law director, but if there's a list of requirements, the requirements need to be met by anybody doing business, you or otherwise. Now, with that being said, you mentioned that you don't think other companies are, have their interests. I believe that some of them might have it just on a personal auto policy. I'm going to explain to you real quick what would happen in that instance, and I'm just going to use you as an example, so we can have a conversation while you're here. If you would put that on a personal auto policy, I don't care what limit you choose, whether you go to the state minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars, or if you put it at a million dollars. If it's on a personal auto policy, and the adjusters learn that you're doing business, the first thing they're going to do is deny the claim completely and totally, and you have zero coverage. Okay? So that's why, when you tell me there's people that aren't following the rule that are doing that, it kind of gets me a little upset, because that puts you, me, and everybody in our community that we've been elected to represent at risk. So we do need to find out how we can better address that part of the problem. Fair is fair. If that's the business you want to choose to be in, you've got this list of things that you have to do, everybody needs to do it. And so I don't know where the failures are happening, if it's the checklist that they're using isn't going on. I don't know these things. So I think we'll have to look into it and probably address this again at our next meeting after we have some time to do some research and get a couple of questions answered. Should be, absolutely. And. Yeah. And so we can, we can look into that. That's pretty much my piece I wanted to say on it. Other than the fact that, you know, like I said, we did work extensively on this, and I'm not going to budge off the one-million-dollar limit. There's absolutely no way that I would change my opinion on that.
I'd just like to keep it on for the next Committee meeting.
Yeah, I want to get some questions answered as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to say, Mr. Barker? And that's what we're going to be checking into, and we're going to talk about it at our next Committee meeting.
Which will be December 19th. It'll be Thursday, December 19th. If you want to come back, I'd welcome that. If you want to come back, I'd welcome that. Absolutely.
You may come up to the podium, please, and state your name and your residential address.
My name's Catherine Barker from three twenty-two Wiley. And I would just like to ask Mr. Myers a question. Is it a possibility that if we go to different insurance companies, the payment wouldn't be so high? We'd take a loan out for the first sixteen hundred, the initial, but I mean.
That's a tough question that's going to have an even tougher answer, so. Depending on the company. Some companies look at the driving record of the drivers.
Yeah.
Others don't. Some of the companies look at the credit rating of the primary person listed on the insurance. Other companies don't. So yeah, there absolutely is the possibility that you could go multiple places and get multiple different quotes. They're also looking at what vehicles are you using? And the weirdest thing, and I don't know, this is all stuff that happens like Wizard of Oz stuff behind the scenes, that the people at the insurance companies say, well, maybe a Chrysler Town and Country minivan, they've had X amount of dollars lost in this zip code. And so that van is going to have a different price in this zip code than it might be in Galian or Crestline or Marion or Cleveland or Columbus. There are just so many things that go into figuring out what that rate is. There's, there's no simple answer to your question. Other than to tell you that yes, you can go to any insurance agent licensed to do business in the state of Ohio and get a commercial insurance vehicle quote.
And they can be different?
Absolutely, they will be. For, for my work, we represent probably multiple, I can't think of the number. I could probably do, you know, come back with seven different quotes from different companies and they're going to be from here to here. And there's no rhyme or reason to what the differences are.
Okay, thank you.
So ma'am, so after the meeting, give us phone number.
You can go anywhere that is licensed to business in the state of Ohio. I'm not shopping for business here, you know, you go anywhere you so choose.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we had Bussar's Codified Ordinance, Section five forty-nine point oh one, the discharging of a firearm within city limits. And we found out that that matter has already been taken care of by ordinance number five dash twenty twenty. So there's nothing for our committee to do tonight.
Correct, it just needs to be updated and taken off the website. And I've gotten hold of the police department and issued a bulletin stating, don't cite anybody under that. However, it wasn't a big deal because they also cited it under sister provision in the Ohio Revised Code. So it was a big nothing burger.
All right, next, open projects. Does anybody have any open projects they wish to talk about?
No, ma'am.
All right, again, public participation. Seeing no one, I will adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at six fifty-five PM.
December fourth, twenty twenty-four. I'm calling Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at six fifty-seven PM. Members present are Zion Hickman, Christopher Moritz, and myself, Ciara and Sharrick Chair. Ms. Sharrick was here but chose to leave earlier, so she is now absent. Do we have any public participation? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting.
I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Hickman, a second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that motion passes. Do we have anything on the open projects list we need to speak about this evening?
I don't think so.
There was one, I need to keep looking at it, I keep forgetting the other one. It was on updates to the hundred ordinance. Because I keep looking at the email that he sent and I keep forgetting to write down the changes that he said were okay. And I think that's something that we need to take care of as soon as possible.
Before next year's?
Yes.
Okay, so anything else?
That'd be for tags and stuff, right, for marking your stands and everything?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have any other public participation? All right, seeing none, I'm going to adjourn at six fifty-eight PM.
Plating Committee, December fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Plating Committee will come to order at seven PM. Aaron Sharrick, Carolyn Schein is absent, Vicki DeShawn, James Meachir. Public participation for plating. Anyone? This time I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes for the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four Regular Plating Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Regular Plating Committee meeting.
Thank you, Aaron. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I seconded.
Thank you, Vicki. Roll call vote, Aaron?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Sorry. General resurfacing. Thirty-five dash two oh twenty-four B C O one one eight nine point oh three B, general resurfacing. Does it look good to everybody? Aaron, you good?
Yeah.
If you have a question.
No, because on top of that, we're working zoning, so we're getting this general surfacing figured out, but then some of the zoning will change with it, won't it?
This thirty-five, the one one eight nine point oh three won't change.
Sweet, all right, perfect then.
Okay. Vicki?
Just a couple of comments, I'm fine with the legislation itself. We keep talking though about one one eight nine point oh three B. There were more subsections rather, other than just B.
Yes.
So we sort of.
I should address it as one one eight nine point oh three?
Yes.
That's what I'll do.
And then secondly, this has been given an ordinance number and that I believe was my fault because, and I don't have the minutes right in front of me, but I had requested that this legislation be referred to council. And at that time, it was given a number. It was placed on the council agenda, but then it was pulled because we had changes, additional changes. Well, this particular piece deals with the zoning code. So when you're working with a zoning code, this will need to go to the Planning Commission, if I understand correctly, and we'll also have a public hearing.
It's already been through, so I'm not sure exactly what the process is on something that's already been through. The original, I think, was kind of the same concept, was everything would go through kind of the zoning appeals variance type thing.
So the question comes down to, is anything of substance changing? Or is it just a scrubber's error that it was assigned an ordinance number and it needs a new ordinance?
No, there was substance.
Then it needs to go back to the hearing?
Actually, five different substances.
That's right, I made those, anyway. Then yeah, it's got to go through the whole process again.
And we'll have to do something eventually with that number that was assigned because you don't assign a number to an ordinance that goes through Planning Commission and then public hearing.
It just won't exist.
Pardon?
It just won't exist, that's what, that's what.
Okay, great.
It'll be marked as a, like an ordinance that didn't pass essentially.
So when we have it on our agenda, we know we should not be referring to ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-four.
And that can change.
Okay, great, thank you. But aside from that, yes, I'm, I'm fine. Why don't you have that look?
Nothing.
Oh.
You'll get used to it.
I thought I was getting the evil eye there.
No, not evil eye.
So we're going to have to go through the flow chart.
Do we need to make a motion to send it back to planning then?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion to send this piece of legislation that does not currently have an ordinance number back to planning.
I second that motion.
Thank you. All the, or, roll call?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Back to planning. Solar panels. Solar panels, I think it's ready for Planning Commission? Maybe not?
Don't. I think it's ready for Planning Commission.
I don't.
All right.
If you'll take a look at the draft that you prepared, Mr. Goldberg. Well, I, I think this was started a long, long time ago and you've just done some edits to it. If you look at Section one, it states, well, here's what Section one should state, that the enactment and establishment of, and we need to insert, Section one one nine three point oh one entitled Solar Panels Under. And then it goes on, Chapter one one nine three. There was just a line that, a line description that was not included in there that, if you look at the caption, it's, you know, it states that in the caption. Section one, you turn around and just reiterate and part of caption was not included in Section one. And I have a copy here for you.
Cool.
With the changes and highlighted in yellow to make it easy for you.
Is that the only change?
No.
I was going to say, is that because, that's an easy.
I knew that because she said changes, okay.
Then on the second page, if you go down to letter E, solar access protection. The fourth line, after the word subject, and this is just minor, but while we're making changes, there needs to be the word to, T O, inserted. Such easements must be in writing and subject to the same conveyance.
So this is under C?
E.
E.
E, solar access protection, line four.
Subject to the same.
Got it.
Yeah, the same sentence.
And then the next page, where we have Miranda and Mr. Frank Hauser's names on here attesting, we want to place, and we weren't doing this before, but now we are inserting Miranda's middle initial, G. And we're inserting Kurt's middle initial, A. And then on the last page, we're inserting the mayor's middle initial of D. So there's that from you.
I was going to say, I can have that done in my.
Go for it.
I have a question.
Do it, print it off.
Mr. Meachir?
Yes.
Are we able to pass this on to planning as amended, so that it, he can get it typed up?
We have done that in the past and.
It's not that bad of amendments.
I, I understand it and I trust Mr. Goldberg. But in the past, when I ran, sat on committees, we passed it like that and it never got changed. And it got to council and we passed it without the changes. And we never knew it until.
Yeah, I remember a couple of those.
So. We could call a recess, Mr. Goldberg could like print that off real quick and.
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody?
Sounds good to me.
Fine with me.
Sounds good.
Bonnie? Uh, seven ten. Time is seven four, seven?
Seven eighteen.
Eighteen. Plating Committee can come to order. We have the solar panels, we have everything right on it. So I'd like to entertain a motion to send to Plating Committee.
Now, planning.
Planning. I will make a motion to send the solar panels, ordinance to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Second?
I second that.
Thank you, Vicki. Aaron?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, we had Pons and Woodlawn come back from last night. And so they actually need to go to the Planning Commission. Right?
May, may I make a motion to send Pons and Woodlawn?
Right.
To the Planning Commission?
For both, or can we do both or?
We can do both.
Why are we in here?
The, the Pons?
Uh, Mr. Chair. They've already been to Planning Commission. You would probably want to send them to full council at this point because there's no changes.
Did they?
No, we have to do a public hearing.
Oh, so did we do the public hearing yet?
That's, well, yeah, that would be full council, would be a public hearing.
No. No, we got to set up an actual public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
So how about January twenty-third at five PM? I know what I wanted to do, but it didn't come out right.
That's okay, can I make a motion to send it to public hearing on?
Wait a minute.
Just a question. Okay, the Planning Commission, they have already approved the Woodlawn three sixteen, three twenty Woodlawn. They've also approved Bussar's Codified Ordinance, Chapter one one eight seven point oh two one, Pons.
Yes.
Now, we're going to, we're sending the solar panels over to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Trusting that, you know, they'll approve that as well. Then we have the one one eight nine point oh three that also needs to go to the Planning Commission. So my question is, do we want to wait, because the Planning Commission appears to meet quite quickly, wait and see what they say about the solar panels and the resurfacing? And if they're in agreement, then just do all four of them at one public hearing?
Didn't the general resurfacing already? Oh, we'd have to re, yeah, we got to redo the whole thing.
Question, do we know how fast they get together?
I have no idea how fast they get together.
The mayor's here.
It should lose leave within a week or two before the Planning Commission.
Great white Planning Commission. All we need is twenty-four hours' notice by, by the regulations of the City of Bussar's to meet an emergency meeting of the Planning Commission to look at both of these subjects, the B C O one one eight nine point oh three and the solar panels, by council rules and the laws of Bussar's. All we have to do is give twenty-four hours' notice, as long as all committee members can make that meeting or a quorum of that commission.
Landen, okay.
Then we can, we can compete.
Landen sets those up though, contacts you guys.
Right, Landen puts all the information together and then we look at it, but you got, we, they could actually call an emergency meeting to get this accomplished.
We, we just need it by the next council meeting.
So, it's whatever you guys want to do.
All right, thank you. Vicki?
Yeah, I, I already knew the procedure.
Yeah, so did I.
So that's my only question. If we just wanted to do all four at one public hearing?
Yes, I would love that.
Okay. So we don't want to schedule a public hearing yet?
Well, it's thirty days out, right?
Yeah.
And our next meeting would be before?
Seventeen, council meeting?
Yeah, before the twenty-third, he's looking at the twenty-third of January, so.
Okay.
Would we be able to?
That would be thirty business days, it wouldn't be thirty regular days.
So it may have to go further.
It, it might have to be probably February at that point, but. It, it might have to be probably February at that point, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, we don't have to establish that right now, when the public hearing's going to be.
Okay, you want everything to go through the planning? Planning.
Yeah, two have already gone through planning and we have two more to go.
Okay, we'll wait. So there's nothing else to do, right?
Just public participation.
Um, open projects, Aaron, you wanted to bring up sidewalks?
Yes, I did. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Sidewalks, we had looked through that before and then it made it to council and I realized what we had talked about was having it checked out by administration. And they're like, well, the, the state says, or somebody says that we have to take anything through council. But I still don't think we should be doing things in council before it's been investigated and checked out. So like, I still think administration, so where it says anybody from the administration or the public can bring it to council, I think it needs to be taken to administration and have their person look at it. And when they say something needs to be corrected, they would bring it to council. Like another step in there. That's what we were missing from what we had said before. Because we understand council has to be the ones to make that, but we think that it should be investiga, like, what if I was just mad at you and I said that there was crap going on with your sidewalk and now we just did a thing in council and they get to your house to find out there's nothing wrong?
Right, so instead of.
So instead.
Having you authorize the investigation, just have them do the investigation.
Have them do the investigation and come to us and we authorize.
Okay.
Sending it.
We can do it that way.
That would fix this, the, the part of the state saying that we're the ones that have to have the final say, but it also fixes people coming and wasting other people's time or doing things that we shouldn't be doing just out of whatever.
We can do it that way.
I mean, I know that there's a lot of them, but, but yeah, that was what we were looking at.
So you're going to rewrite that then?
Yep.
Please, sir, thank you. Do we need to make a motion to have it fixed or?
Technically.
Okay, can we have a?
But it's already on my to-do list, so.
Would you like it?
But would you like me to make the motion?
Yes.
All right, I make, I make a motion to ask Mr., um, uh, Goldberg to, um, add to the, um, sidewalk legislation, to have it be investigated prior to bringing it to council.
Do I have a second? Vicky? Maybe?
Second it. Yeah, I'll second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes. Where are we at? No more open projects, public participation. Meeting adjourned at 7:28?